Present. We're called to order, 7 o'clock. Commissioner Dawson, would you let us in our prayer and pledge, please?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us all together this evening. Father, we pray that you help us lead with servants' hearts. We pray for anybody that is going through difficult times, especially those that are suffering in the Ukraine. Thank you, Father, for all of your many gifts that you bestow upon us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dawson. I have to say first that Commissioner Lucas is tied up with his day job is the reason he is not here tonight. Item four, approval of agenda and executive session announcement. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
I needed to add something to the agenda tonight. Would this be the place to do it?
Before we approve it, yes.
Okay. I would like to...
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we need to withdraw the motion in the second?
I withdraw the motion, Mayor.
I withdraw my second.
Then there would need to be a motion to amend the agenda before...
Okay. So we need a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
We have a motion to amend the agenda. Do we need a second on that, too, or do we just amend without a second?
You have to have a second on that as well.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to amend the agenda. Is there any discussion? Do we add the amendments?
What do you add?
What is the amendment?
This would be the time for Commissioner Anderson to state what she wants to add to the agenda.
I would like to ask the board if they would consider adding a discussion of sales of picket and donations for the playground build. Also, as a part of 7A, the Arbor Day proclamation, we need to add the Parks and Landscape Committee presenting the Tree City flag and the four-year anniversary materials.
Okay, so we're adding 11B, which would be reopening picket sales. Correct?
Discussion of reopening picket sales and donation to the playground build.
Move to approve as amended.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since everybody's making amendments here, can I make an amendment as well, or do I need to make a separate amendment?
As soon as I get through writing the first two, you can. We'll figure out what you need to do.
Thank you.
How's that?
State what your amendment is, and then we'll ask Commissioner Butler if his motion includes approval with your amendment as well.
I'd like to make an amendment to discuss employee appreciation.
And where do you want to add that? Do you want that to be under new business, 11D at this point in time?
That would be fine. Thank you.
Okay.
I think that would be 11C.
You're correct. If I knew my alphabet, life would be easy.
No, it's okay. Just clarification.
Commissioner Butler, does your motion include those amendments?
It did, yes, sir. Thank you for verifying.
Need to be a second to that, and then...
Second.
All right. And then a vote to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. And so, just so I know that I know what I'm doing, 7A will now also include presentation of Arbor Day flag and bumper sticker. 11B, under new business, discussion of reopening picket sales and donations. And 11C will be employee appreciation discussion.
Right.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, just as a reminder, I don't think this needs to be changed, but as a reminder, prior to the adjournment of this meeting, the BOC will go into executive session. That executive session will take about 15 minutes. I expect to be no action for the BOC to take once we exit. So after communication to the mayor and commission, we'll have an executive session, then come back into adjourn. I believe that's on your document, just as an explanation of that.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion of the amended agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Public hearings, those are with the items. Citizen comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
None tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Public announcements, awards, and recognition. Item A is Arbor Day proclamation. Mr. McCoy, would you like to come up and...
So I believe the proclamation... Randy, did you say that you'd given them the updated? So it's a matter, I think, of you having that... Oh, you've already got it. Oh, is it already signed?
Yes, I've already signed my... There was no alphabet required here, so I signed my name and everything.
Very good. Then I'll... So the proclamation is something that Fairview issues every year to recognize Arbor Day and set a date for the celebration for the city. Part of what inspired that recurring annual event is our qualification for Tree City. And so this will be our fourth year now having Tree City. And I'll just give up like 45 seconds. The Tree City USA program was founded in 1976 to celebrate towns and cities committed to growing their urban canopy. It's led by the Arbor Day Foundation with partners at the USDA Forest Service and National Association of State Foresters, and it provides the foundational framework necessary for communities to manage and expand their tree cover. And so, we join several other cities in Tennessee that have embarked on the program. And we'll have an Arbor Day event on April 30th at the park from 9:00 a.m. to noon. We'll have a tent out there with some kids' activities, some educational pamphlets, and I'm trying to get some... They're not saplings, the smaller version of tree giveaways. We've got a variety we're picking from that people can come and actually take home. And so, because it's four-year, Arbor Day, these are actually not bumper stickers, but they'll go on our signs for the Tree Cities. And I've already talked to the city manager about these, so that just kind of advertises that, as well as flag they sent for the city for Arbor Day. And so what I was hoping to do, part of what we have to demonstrate as well, in addition to having the events, is get a picture of us holding the flag and the proclamation, and then that gives us something to send back. And then I'll leave this material with the city manager. Questions?
Oh, and the proclamation, is that handy? Oh, I'll hold that on here as well.
Mayor, you don't want to be in the picture?
We'd like your pardon. Your copy, Mike? Okay, everybody ready? On three. One, two, three. All right, good job.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Mayor, real quick, I just want to say thank you. Mr. McCoy, the Parks and Landscape Committee, I know several years ago when this was just a tree board, we talked about becoming a tree city. It was a lot of work. It took a lot. Scott took it on, made it happen, and has continued to keep us there. So thank you very much for all that work on it.
Thank you, sir. Scott, thank you. 7B, city events. Richard?
Good evening. Just a reminder that this Saturday, we're going to be having our Easter egg hunt here at City Hall. That's going to begin at 10:00 a.m. We're going to have food trucks on site, and then games, along with some prizes, and of course, the Easter Bunny as well. And those are some future events for the city. And we would like to thank everyone that sponsored a picket. A total of 514 pickets were sponsored, and we thank you very much for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, are you everybody this month, too?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, I am. And I'll be brief on these. With the planning report, it was kind of a slow month, but that's not uncommon in March. We had 11 single-family building permits for the month of March, and we had nine other building permits. Other building permits are accessory structures, things of that nature, that come in that aren't a building permit. And it also can be not a new construction, but an improvement to a structure. So again, somewhat of a slow month, but we expect that for March. Nothing to be alarmed there, but we hear growth in discussion all the time. And I think if you look at our monthly building permits compared to others, we're substantially lower than that. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but this is where we are for the month of March. And we anticipate this, we'll see a little bit of an uptrend from now through the summer for our months, for our building permits. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on those, but again, that's a low month, and we anticipate that it will be.
Are there any questions about the planning department report? Okay, finance?
Your finance report, Mayor, members of the commission, I distributed to you before the meeting tonight, our three-page document, or two-page document that's stapled together. The first is our cash balances. All of our cash balances, particularly our general fund operating, is obviously up this year over last year at this time. This does reflect some changes we had to our debt service. Obviously, we've done part of our debt service already. Most of that is due in April. There was a bit of a change in our debt service this year because of the bond issue, so we'll see another debt service payment in June. But our cash position is favorable to us for this month over last year, which is what we anticipated and what we look forward to. So cash position, we look perfectly fine with that. The second page is our January local government investment pool recap for our reserve fund, which is at $1,2,584. Again, we are ahead of schedule on fully funding our reserves, so we look forward to continue that. These documents will become important in our first meeting in May when we get into our new budget year. Obviously, we budget off of our cash. This information will be super helpful to us. I'll get some information out to you guys in advance as far as the anticipated budget that we'll talk about in May. But our year, this year's kind of exceeded our expectations. We know the same will take place for next year. There's some big changes for there, but we look forward to getting the new budget year budget adopted because of the capital expenditures that we'll have this year. So as excited as we were last year to get this year's budget done, that's nothing compared to the work that we'll see in the next 18 months for the new budget year. We certainly look forward to getting that done. So I'd be glad to answer any questions on our cash position, but we are ahead of where we thought we would be, and that's always good financially.
Are there any finance report questions? Okay, public works?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, one item for you tonight. We have been successful in filling our final vacancy for the public works department. We've been working for some time to be able to get there. Our hope was that we will be able to add a crew member position. We were a bit lucky in that we're going to not add a crew member position, but add an equipment operator position. This will give us the ability to have two full crews service-wise available to us. That obviously helps us with service and also helps us with safety. What we'll be able to do is have, on our chipper service days, three, a minimum of three crew members assigned to the chipper service that we can do. And we'll have two employees available that can do other work, right-of-way mowing, equipment, anything that we need to do outside of that. So to have two equipment operators available to us with the director and the two crew members that we have really expands our scope of work. So we're super excited. He starts two weeks from Monday. About 9:00 o'clock on that day, we'll have him on a backhoe getting some work done. We look forward to having him here, so...
And our chipper service starts this month again?
Yes, chipper service started the month of April. We are working to do things a little ahead of the schedule this year. This is now the fourth year. It doesn't seem like it, but we adopted our chipper service ordinance in 2018. Seems like it was just, you know, last year when we did that, but we've been there for some time. So we are getting a little more aggressive this year. As a matter of fact, Brian and I talked earlier this week with getting ahead of the piles of chipper debris, other things that don't meet code. Those create a health hazard for us. They create a safety hazard within the community. We've worked in the past to try and work through some of those things to make sure we're getting the word out, but the word's been out long enough. So Brian started this week. We're going to make a sweep of the city. We'll continue to do this weekly. And anything that doesn't meet the code, either by the size of the pile that can be picked up, or the length of time that it's out there, they'll receive a letter, they'll receive a second letter. After the second letter, it's not remedied, then they'll receive a summons. We're really working to make sure that those services are handled well. And we are also focusing within that dilapidated structures. We have several across the city. We've worked about, we've worked within those for some time, but our focus in the planning department and public works is to get those areas cleaned up. So you'll see an accelerated rate of those things come before you, but our effort is to really get ahead of getting those things cleaned up, so...
I had a person contact me yesterday and that it's hard, that they knew they were in the yellow zone, but the legend about when the yellow zone is picked up could not be seen. And I tried to find it, and it may have just been my device that I was using, but I could not see that either. So could you check that?
We'll check and see. They just have to scroll down on the page itself. It has the highlighted, and then below that, it has the text of the date.
I couldn't find it, and she couldn't find it, but it may have just been. So if you would just check.
We'll take a look and see if we can't make some larger text or direction to those dates.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Collins, I've got a question. I've had a couple of people ask specifically, so if they see that or identify that dilapidated house or that issue where there's a bunch of garbage, who can they contact specifically in the city to report that or to...
They can call the planning department.
Okay.
Just call planning. The person who shows the phone out there will direct that to Brian, and then we'll get out there and follow up on those things.
Thank you.
And we hope that they call. Our goal is really to work to get some of that stuff cleaned up.
And so is it just dilapidated buildings, or is it also like abandoned cars and that kind of thing?
Same, similar. We're going to see those things.
Thank you.
For us, we'll go through and do all of that work, but if someone sees something, we hope that they call in. We have in the past gotten complaints to where there's something visible from one house to another, but it's not necessarily a violation of city code. So we'll work within those and try to explain those out. But for the ones that we can police and clean up, we certainly will. For the ones that we cannot, we'll give an explanation of why we can't do those things. But more often than not, we hope to be able to take some action to assist.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then, last thing, under item 8D, city managers' report, the one thing I have to report to you tonight is that the staff and I have our first project meeting with the vendors for the playground. That takes place next week. Obviously, we've got most of the things that we need in, information in to start, do the fencing work, do some scheduling work. You may recall that we've removed all the trees that need to be removed from the site, cleaned it up, removed all of the concrete sidewalk, everything we need to do to allow the installation of that. We will meet next week with the vendor. Some of the equipment, as you know, has been delivered and continues to be delivered, but we hope by the end of the day, next Tuesday, to have some implementation and installation scheduled for that. Once we get that, we'll use that information, go back and finish up with our fencing work, finish up with our concrete work, and figure out how we now put all of those pieces in place. The scheduling and timing of that obviously is important, but that's the purpose of the meeting next week. So as we get into that, we are kind of full bore into the playground project at this point, and look forward to getting that moving ahead on the schedule that we have now, so... And that's all I have for you.
Any questions on the city managers' report? Thank you, sir. Consent agenda? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
10, old business, A, rezoning of property on Highway 96 North. We will now open the public hearing for that piece of property that's being requested to be rezoned. Is there anyone here to speak on that? If you removed your cap, sir, thank you. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Name is Jeff Pack, 614 Highway 96, Fairview, Tennessee.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just, I'm concerned about rezoning that because we have so much water runoff. We're in a zone, we're in an area that takes a lot of water from that. It's about 100-acre area from City Park off the hill, and we're worried about cutting them lots down smaller. If they get the right retention ponds and all of that stuff is one thing, and they control the development runoff, the post-development runoff. But another thing is on 96 Highway, there's a terrible curve. We was raised right there, and it's a curve that's a blind spot. I'm worried about traffic right in there with all the traffic control. I'm worried about the value of our property. Is it going to hurt the value of our property with putting, rezoning all this to smaller lots? I mean, whenever it comes to, when it comes to rezoning it down to smaller lots, and we have an area that's already, that's problems with water runoff, with the road, the blind spots in the road, I just ask that y'all look at this before y'all make a decision to rezone to smaller lots. I just think, now, Fairview's going in a great, great way. I mean, there's beautiful developments everywhere, and I'm not total against developments. I just want y'all to take that in consideration of when we have problem areas already with the water. And I know that we're getting our wastewater, and y'all have hired engineers, and hopefully in the future, we won't have as many problems as we have in the past of the developments. So hopefully, the engineers can look at all this. But I just plead before y'all to think about rezoning for these small, little bitty lots in these certain areas that already are problem areas. And, you know, with the value of our property, and I don't know what kind of town, I think they're talking about townhouses. I don't know what type of townhouses they're going to build. I don't know what they're going to look like. The traffic, like I say, the traffic control, it's in a blind spot on 96 Highway. I was raised right there, and I mean, if you don't pull out real fast, I mean, it's a very dangerous spot. Like I say, the water, and I just want y'all to think about this. Just think about, and you know, I'm not against development. I just don't want you to, I don't want you to think I am. I know Fairview's going, I was raised here. We've been living here. I've been living on that property since 1971. And I went to Fairview High School, my whole family has, and I'm not against development. I know this is going to happen, but I just plead before y'all to think about certain areas, you know, that's bad areas. And hopefully, if it does get passed, I'm hoping that y'all's engineers will hold their feet to the fire on this post-development runoff compared to the pre-development runoff that's existing compared to what's going to happen. Because in the past, I've had a couple subdivisions that was built around me, and I can, I mean, it's one thing for them to put it on paper that it's the same, and it's another thing if you live on the property and you know where the water run and how it run. And then after they do a development and say that everything's going to be the same, the engineer stamped it, everything's going to be the same, it's going to be the same runoff as it was before they started. I'm here to tell you that it's not. I'm here to tell you that I've had to go and, I've had to install several culverts when I was told this, and I've had to do a lot of work to my property on two different developments that was kind of close to my property. And I've got a retention pond now that's leaking out on the basement of my house that was passed, and everything was fine, which I know is probably the developers' deal now. But anyway, I'm just going, I'm just trying to show you examples of how we can try to get a hold of this, because I'm sure that y'all have had litigation and been sued and everything else over water. And I'm sure that we need to get a hold of this and hold their feet to the fire, and hopefully, these engineers will make sure that they're designing these projects correctly. And, but I love Fairview. Fairview's a beautiful place to live, just the best schools, people, and I'm not totally against development. I just ask that y'all just take that in consideration, what I said about the traffic, about the water, and about the value of our property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this development? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Item 10A2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-09. Vice Mayor?
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 3.44 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, parcel 165.01, Highway 96 North, from CG Commercial General to RM 12, multifamily. Property owner, Jonathan Caldwell. Move for approval?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor? Is... Thank you.
I'm here.
I always find it interesting how you just creep up before I even look up. So you've heard the concerns?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to address those, and then tell us what, tell everyone what you're planning to do?
Yeah, and I'll try to go down them as I recall them, but if I forget one, please remind me. But the stormwater...
Traffic and water.
Stormwater, I met with my engineer late last week to do a conceptual plan. We located a spot where the detention pond should be, just by the way the land currently lays. That big round circle there is the detention pond. And I also instructed the engineer, we've only got to make the post-runoff water be the same as the pre-runoff water, and I've instructed him, let's take it a step more. If we retain just a few percentage points more water post-development than we did pre, then maybe we're helping everybody. As far as the traffic goes, when I, when we originally applied for the rezoning application, the city staffed, they looked at the site distance from where this entrance would be. And of course, they have to account for the speed limit in that area. They seem to think it had plenty of visibility. Of course, that's a state highway, so TDOT will have the final say-so of anything that we have to do with the highway.
So will the entrance to the property, where is your entrance?
It's the existing driveway. There's an existing driveway there now, right across from the TDOT garage.
Where the house is?
Yes, that is correct. Where the white brick house is, we will, we plan to use that same entrance point.
Are you going to straighten that entrance out, or is it going to be the angled entrance? It is...
No, the entrance into the townhomes will remain the same, then the driveway to the house will bear off at its current location. But the driveway and the entrance to these will all be one entry point on the Highway 96.
So what is your plan to build there?
As you can see there, I believe that's 40. He sent me an original layout, and I guess forgot what I told him the first time, but he sent me one with 52. It would hold probably 56 with the amount of... probably 56 with the amount of properties that, that is there, but we've scaled that back to 40. And, they all have, I think on the previous slide you could see, we're going to use a combination of those two exterior facades for these, they've got first floor garages, which would accommodate a car in the garage, a car in the driveway, and then on the conceptual plan, you can see that we have, I think, 24 additional parking spots outside of that for overflow parking or visitors to park.
Mr. Mangram, I've got a question about the, the distance between the sidewalk, are you going to be able to park a vehicle in there and still utilize the sidewalk?
We're a minimum of 20 feet from the back of the sidewalk to the garage, that's the minimum, and that, these buildings, the plan F540 is probably the one we're going to go with, that building, you can't really tell it by that plan, but each unit staggers back two feet, so if, if unit one is 20 feet from the back of the sidewalk, unit six will be 12 additional feet, so 32 feet from, so you could almost park two cars in those driveways.
There's been some concerns expressed about clearcutting that property?
Of course, we will do a tree count, all the trees have been counted to this point, and if you drive by, you'll see every one of them has a ribbon on, orange ribbon around it, so we will address that, we will have to take some trees out to get the houses or the townhomes on there, and we'll plant back a large number of trees to try to mimic pretty close to what you see here as far as trees in front of the buildings. But we will, we'll leave as many as we possibly can leave.
Is there any other discussion?
Just wanted to, of course, talk about that, that huge white elephant in the corner of the room, that water runoff, and I appreciate you recognizing that that obviously is a huge issue here in the city of Fairview, and going above and beyond of what is asked of you, and hopefully, if we have developers, you know, continue to do that, we're going to be able to mitigate it that much better. There, there is still this question of what can we do throughout the city to mitigate our stormwater, and we are taking, I think, we are, we are providing that mechanism for the city to be more involved with holding everyone accountable for that water runoff. So, we, we, we created that stormwater ordinance, so our engineers are going to be able to work with the developers much more closely to make sure that, that water runoff is mitigated as much as possible. So I, I appreciate you coming in and talking specifically about that detention pond that you have, and you're going to go above and beyond what is asked, because it's, it's such a major issue here.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ten B, rezoning of property on Highway 96 North, we will open the public hearing for that now, is there anyone here that wishes to speak on that? Yeah, next, next to it, right?
You know what's funny, I finally realized what's going on here. Y'all are all in cahoots together. You know what, you laugh all you want to, Lisa, you play cards with him, you play golf with him, let me tell you something, y'all all in cahoots together, so you, you go ahead and pass everything you want to pass here, let me tell you something, it's a good old, this is a good old boy's system right here, ain't it? That's all it is, it's a good old boy's system, if you're in the right clique, like this one right here, he's left y'all with unpaved roads before filing bankruptcy, and y'all suck him up, y'all all know him, y'all all know him just real good, don't you? Huh? You don't play golf with him?
I don't think so.
You don't play cards with him?
Absolutely not.
Yeah, I think, I think you're, I think you're.
I have never, I have, I have never.
You know what, you go ahead and pass that, you do what you do, y'all all know him, y'all all in cahoots with him, so go ahead and do, you do what you do, okay? It's, but, it's, it's sad, it's sad whenever y'all represent the people that voted y'all in, it's sad. But, this one right here, he's done, done a subdivision over across the road from me, hadn't even offered to, I, I installed culverts over there, he didn't even.
Mr. Pack, if I hate to interrupt you, but, if, if you want to direct your comments to the planning committee, or the board commissioners, that's fine, but engaging someone else in the room is not permissible.
And Mr. Pack, we aren't discussing the Horn Tavern property?
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that, but, I just wanted to say the way I feel, and that's the way I feel, and I hope it, I hope I'm wrong, I really do, I hope I'm wrong.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this?
So, we're adding, oh, sorry, Leslie Street, 10, how can you tell my address, 1062 Highway 96 North, these developments coming in, we have a major problem on 96 at Clements Lake, the highway is falling in on the side, we've got cones up there right now, my husband drives a school bus and drives by there every day, and I fear a wheel is going to slide off, and the bus is going to go down. The big dump trucks, anything big, the semis, any of those that feel like they have to move over just a little, and they're going to be down in Clements Lake, kind of the drain off part of it. We need to fix that before we keep adding more vehicles and more people to it, because that's a very dangerous spot. So, I feel you need to slow down right now and fix the major issues first, thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this? We will close the public hearing. Ten B2, ordinance 2022-10, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 1.33 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, parcel 164.00, from RS40 Residential Single Family to R20 Residential, property owner Platinum Equities LLC, move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we will open the discussion. Mr. Mangram.
I'm back.
I see.
I want to set the record straight on two things, I'll make it three. Never played golf with that man, I've never played cards with that woman, and yes, I did file bankruptcy, and I've set it up here once before, but I wrong, I corrected that wrong, that road's paved.
Okay. Is there anything additional you'd like to add about the property development?
No, it's, you've seen the, the conceptual drawing, this is part of that, matter of fact, the pond sits on the back triangle piece of, of that piece of property, because it'll be a, it'll be a, a new plat combining these two and minusing out the house and a half acre lot.
So this is the house?
Yes, so your next item splits it out.
Any questions of Mr. Mangram?
Mr. Collins, just outside this, is, is the state aware, are we aware of, of 96 erosion?
Yes, Commissioner Butler, we, the city is aware of that, of that section of Highway 96, and we've communicated that information to the state.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other discussion on this property, this development? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, we will close discussion, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ten C, rezoning of property on Highway 96 North, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Ordinance 2022-10, Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm so sorry, I've checked that off my list, and I'm still reading that. Ordinance 2022-11, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 022, part of parcel 164.00, located on Highway 96 North from R20 Residential to RM12 Multifamily, property owner Platinum Equities LLC. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion, any other questions, or Mr. Mangram? Hearing none, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, amended budget, we will open the public hearing on the amended budget, is there anyone here to speak on that? Seeing no one, we will close that public hearing. Second and final reading of ordinance 2022-13, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. New Business, 11A, Resolution 08-22, Vice Mayor, if you'd read the resolution, please.
A resolution to support restoring the historic revenue sharing relationship between the state of Tennessee and its local governments, and to return the local share of the single article cap to local governments. Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Collins, would you like to give us some detail on that, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, I'll, I'll give you some information on this, and what you're being asked to do is largely a symbolic gesture, there's, there's no definitive answer or response to the city at this time. In 2002, the, the state's sales tax rate was 6%. The state had gone through some financial issues back at that time, they increased the state sales tax rate from 6% to 7%. As you're aware, we get certain percentages of money back from the state, there's a state shared sales tax, other dollars that come to the city, those distributions are based on the 6% that was in place in 2002, on the extra percent that was passed in 2002, the state of Tennessee retains to the state 100% of that one cent sales tax. The Tennessee Municipal League has requested that all of its municipal jurisdictions pass a resolution requesting that that 1%, given the state's financial condition today, that that 1% be redistributed as is the existing or previous 6%. If that were to take place, and again, this is a symbolic gesture and request on behalf of the cities, but if this were to be successful statewide, the net result to the city would be just over $140,000 a year in state shares tax, state shared sales tax revenue to the city. So, the effort in this is to have the municipalities across the state adopt a resolution supporting this redistribution, submit that to the legislature in hopes that that 1% can be distributed the same as the other 6%.
Any questions of Mr. Collins? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor, Ms. Johnson.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11B, discussion of, discussion of reopening picket sales and donations, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had several people from the community come to me, and we have had some people in our community pass away and other situations where they were asking if we could extend the picket sales possibly 30 days. Since the fence is going up last, I just want input if, you know, that could be accommodated.
Commissioner Anderson, Mayor, members of the commission, just briefly kind of walk through where we are on this. Under the structure that we had where someone could go on, on the website, make the purchase, and do all those things that we know we, we had in place, the city had purchased subscriptions for that, we don't own those services, we don't, we don't own the, the service that we would use to go in, transfer the dollars and make the purchase and all sorts of those things. Based on how we had done all of the, the work to generate the dollars, all of our subscriptions and account accesses for that process expired on March 31st as the collection of those dollars did. So, if we were to go back and try and reinstate that specific program, that would cost a little bit of money to install, it would take us about seven days to get that system back up, it's just the nature of where we are in that, in that process. If, and based on what we had, we're moving forward, we're doing some work on the fencing and the other, if it's the pleasure of the board, I don't mind, or wouldn't mind, trying to work to where, if someone has that request, if they just email that, that request for what that is, once we get to the point of trying to fulfill the fence and the other work, if we get those in, we'll do everything we can to accommodate those requests that we get in the interim between the time to order and, and tonight, or today, or whenever that, whenever that's done. So, to open it back up as, as we did, just wouldn't make sense for us to do for the limited activity we would see, but we certainly will be glad to work within whatever requests we have up until the time of, of making the purchase of the fencing, if we can do that, so.
What email would that be?
That's my city email, it's scollins@fairview-tn.org.
Mr. Collins, could we still have something on the website, if you still want to purchase a picket, contact so-and-so by email, is that possible?
We'll put a small, we'll put a small thing on there, because we're, we're, we're really in the implementation phase of all this, and I don't want to give the perception that it's just still open in that thing, so, we'll put something there to reference that, to do that thing, but it will be smaller than what the full advertisement was before.
I think we're still trying to find maybe a local provider, but the original provider we got a quote from, I think, took almost 60 days to get them in to make them, so it was kind of a long lead time, so we set that date of expiration based off of how much time we need to get pickets in, so, and I'm sure it's extended in the way in today's world.
However we can accomplish that, we'll certainly try and do that.
And I presume that there would be other things that people could gift in memory of someone if they wanted to?
So, just a question, how many total pickets were available? And you said we sold 500 plus, how many pickets were available to go around?
Way more than 500.
We said we needed like 670 or 680 or something like that.
It's a, it's a, it's a large number.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Also, just because I've been asked the same thing, since the donor wall is not finalized or with the design, is there, is that completely finished, or would someone be able to donate and have their name or logo on the donor wall?
So, I'll, I'll just refer back to the discussions that were had at, at the time, the, the discussions that were brought about and adopted by resolution were, was that, or were, that donations for construction of the playground were to be remitted to the city by December 30, and anything after that would be used for future maintenance of the, of the playground. So, with that, and the fact that the playground project to set up is fully funded, so if someone were to be making a donation, we wouldn't be using that, we would have a need to use that, those donated dollars for construction of the, of the playground. Those would be, any of those dollars that came in, unless the board rescinded that resolution, any of those dollars that come in would go to the maintenance, future maintenance of the playground. So with that, I, I think the only way to be fair would be if there was some effort to open that up to all new donors that come in, but then we're going to have to cut it off at some point, because again, we're meeting next week to finalize some designs for the donor recognition, so we're, we're just up against calendar, I mean, honestly, we're just really, we- just up against calendar. I mean, honestly, we're just really, we set those dates out because we knew the calendar that was coming in. Again, the board has the privilege of doing that. But, for staff in the project, um, we needed those hard dates so we can move forward with, with the project itself. So, that clearly the privilege of the board. But, um, for us, it does present some difficulty in just trying to, to manage the changes in the, in the ongoing project itself. So, for what that's worth.
I do remember- So, is that a no or?
That, that's a board decision. Um, that, that's, that's a board discussion. However, the board chose to do that would, that's, that's there to do. I, only thing I'd tell you, tell you, um, is that we're working off that resolution and those dates and using that information that we collected as a part of the, the project to complete.
I do remember we all discussed that at length about what was the best day and how to best do that. And, we decided that December 31 was construction and everything after that would be maintenance. So, I, I do remember there was lots of figuring on our hands about what to do the best day. So, that seems to make sense.
Just if, I'm, I'm just asking. So, if a donor came forward and donated money for maintenance, would it, since the donor wall's not been approved, would they still be able to be on that or no?
I don't think the maintenance fund gets recognition on the donor wall because I'm presuming that over the years to come, there will be other donations to that fund.
I would assume in theory. But, again, that's, that's board decision for, for how that would, how that would go. Our interpretation of that and our application of that has been the donor recognition was donor for playground project prior to the cutoff date for those donations, knowing that we were on a deadline to generate funds for this thing. You may recall that just kind of getting to the financials that we got to was a bit difficult. So, if the board chose to do that, and again, you could do that by resolution, not if you wanted to, we would make every effort to include that. But, we had not done that so far simply because of the dates and schedule we were working within, so.
My concern would be there, then at what point in time do we close that? Because, if people make donations to that maintenance fund next year, you know, how would we get them on the recognition wall?
I don't think it was a, like a next year thing. I think it was like, you know, if it opened up for a week or three days or 48 hours or something like that. But, I'd just have to bring it up because it was brought up to me.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Adam C. Employee Appreciation. Mr. Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that, uh, we, we have all worked really hard and, along with Mr. Collins in, in, um, obtaining a, a raise for our employees that have gone without a raise. You know, our employees are our most important asset here in the city. They provide so many things for us and we're so happy to be able to do that for them. Um, I would like to see us go a step further, um, specifically from the Board of Commissioners. Uh, I would like to see a quarterly employee of, of the quarter and to have a, um, an award for that employee from the BOC and also to have a, um, a cash incentive for that employee of $500. And then, I would also like to have a VIP, uh, one employee of the year, uh, and, and to have that as a $1,000 incentive. You know, when we start talking about across the region, uh, we are all desperately, um, trying to recruit employees. And, the employees that we have here are phenomenal. And, we want to make sure that we have the, the very best, uh, public works, uh, police officers, uh, office staff and anybody that works for the city. We want the very top tier. And, I feel it's important for us to have incentives. And, I would like to have incentives specifically from the Board of Commissioners. When we talk about that quarterly, um, employee, uh, the employee of the quarter, uh, I would like all of the, the division directors to come together to, um, determine who that employee would be. And, as we have each employee of the quarter, out of those four, we would select the VIP of the year and have those recognized at a BOC meeting and just thank them for their service. Would, uh, like everybody's thoughts on that?
So, would the department heads, who would come up with the requirements to be quarterly employee or the annual, the employee of the year?
Yeah, I, I think, so those, those suggestions would be either sent from the directors, uh, managers, so forth, um, supervisors to the directors of each of our departments. And then, the department heads would come together to determine who that employee of the quarter would be. And then, along with Mr. Collins, uh, with the directors, they would determine who that employee of the year or the VIP of the year would be. And, I would like to, I, I would like that, uh, specific award to come from the BOC just to show them our appreciation specifically.
Is this something that we could all think about until the next meeting and kind of come up with thoughts and, and put it on the agenda to discuss?
Certainly.
Next?
Yeah.
Would that be okay with everyone?
I think that's perfect. One other idea I just want to throw out is like an appreciation picnic or luncheon where everybody can come on a Friday afternoon at the park, have a picnic or grill on things. And, and maybe we, um, announce the VIP at the event like that or something.
Great idea. Yeah. And, I'll, it would be great if we could have that calendared same, same time every year, uh, at, at the park. Uh, I think it would be just wonderful for the employees and their family.
If you can do it right, they can do it during Pork in the Park.
How convenient.
Judges.
They can be judges at Pork in the Park. Brandy, will you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would actually like to get to know all of our firemen, policemen, new staff because, I mean, I've had people walk in the shop and I didn't know that they were part of our city staff. So, I think a picnic, you know, something like that to bring everybody together. So, we know, you know, who we all are would be great.
Ms. Johnson, will you add that to the agenda for the next meeting? Thank you so much. Adam 12, communications from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the Keep Fairview Beautiful Crew, next Saturday, so April 16th at 9:00 AM. We'll meet out here at City Hall and, and pick up some, some trash around the streets of Fairview. I know they'd love some, some volunteers and some help. That's all I have, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to let everybody know also that that, um, community cleanup was, um, organized by Stacy Greathouse and Keep Fairview Beautiful Facebook Committee. Also, you know, it, we want to keep our community beautiful. So, let's all work together to not, you know, throw out trash. And, if we see it, we can, you know, on a daily basis just help clean it up. And, um, I appreciate, appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Um, we love for people in the community to be involved. I know that, you know, that sometimes we don't see eye to eye on things. But, I for one, I don't vote because I know somebody. I vote because I feel like something's best for our community. And, um, the, all of the issues that were brought up, they need to be, you know, overseen. And, that's important to me, too. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
I, I want to thank the, the Park Operational Plan Committee. Uh, if, if some of you weren't here for the, the work session before, uh, just great things that are about to happen in our park system. And, Laura Mancell, LaRonda Williams, Gail Cherry was here also. If you guys will just raise your hand, I just wanted to publicly thank you for your time. Uh, it's all volunteer time that you're doing this for. And, uh, it, it's just, uh, it's, it's wonderful what is about to happen here in the city of Fairview with our parks. Um, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And, I have nothing tonight. We will, the board will-
I have 60 seconds of the time. I promised to be simple.
Um, okay.
60 seconds. Um, I've just, I've said to several of me since for the last two months and it seems that, it seems to me that every zoning issue that comes across gets passed. And, I'm just curious if anybody has sat down and figured out the number of houses, the number of vehicles that are going to be dumped onto 96 Highway. I, I just wonder, has anybody sat down and figured that out? Because, it seems to me that's something we're overlooking.
Thank you. We will adjourn to executive session?
Mayor, just briefly, I, the answer to that's yes.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't have it in front of me. I'm not, I, I, that's not really how it works. Um, we, we take pretty good effort into going back and making sure we do those things. I apologize. I don't know the specific number for a random question that someone would step up after a meeting and ask. Um, but, we do put some pretty considerable effort into making sure that we address those and adopt the plans for the traffic that the city can. They'll facilitate that.
So, we will adjourn to executive session and then we will come back after that executive session, letting it adjourn the meeting here.
Yes, that's correct.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And, we are adjourned. And, happy anniversary to our city attorney.